Called together today for the Agenda Regular Meeting Thursday, November 19th, 2020. Ask everyone to please silence their phones. And if there's anyone downstairs that would like to talk on any particular item, ask that you fill out a little blue card and they will get it up to us and we will bring you up. Item one, invocation and pledge of allegiance, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I get your head with me, please? Heavenly Father, we thank you as always for the opportunity to get together. We ask that you be in our hearts and our minds and direct our language and our behavior. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity that you give us here tonight. We ask that you bless the proceedings, handle in a way that pleases you, Lord. We ask also, Lord, that you guide this great nation, get us through the hard times that we're having. We ask, Lord, that you guide us and hold us in your mighty, mighty hand and get us through these tough months that we had. Let us realize, Lord, that we can replace stuff. Stuff's not the issue. We can't replace humans. We're so thankful, Lord, in this parish unforeseen. Lord, we ask that you bless his feet, the precious son of Jesus, not.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Vice President Abshar.
Here.
Mr. Edgipon.
Here.
Mr. Bears.
Here.
Mr. Barti.
Here.
Mr. Brain.
Here.
Mr. Burley.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Landry.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Markentell.
Here.
Mr. Reshar.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Stelling is unable to attend this evening. Mr. Tremonti.
Here.
And President Gilbert.
Here.
You do have a call.
Thank you. Item four, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Bean.
Mr. President, we have 38 applications for liquor and beer permits. We recommend approval for all.
That's coming back. We have a motion by Mr. Bears and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion, any objection that motion carries?
Move on five.
Second.
Item number five, consideration of approving payment to all of all current invoices and advise regular monthly budget to actual comparisons. I have a motion by Mr. Edgipon and a second by Mr. Bears. Is there any discussion, any objection that motion carried? Item six, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated October 22nd, 2020. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion, any objection that motion carried? Item seven, consideration of approving the Budget Committee report dated November 18th, November 19th, 2020. Mr. Brain.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Committee of the Police Jury met at 4:00 PM today, November 19th. The committee recommended approval of the following items from the parish gaming funds. Ward two, $20,475. Ward two, Fire Protection District, number two, number one, for the purchase and installation of a generator. The committee also received a presentation of the proposed 2021 Police Jury Budget from the parish administrator, Brian Bean. The proposed Police Jury Budget for 2021 is $397.9 million, which is a 53.9% increase from the 2020 budget of $258.5 million. This increase is due to disaster recovery costs projected in the next calendar year. The operation portion of the proposed budget decreases by 8% in light of expected revenue declines. Property taxes and sales taxes are both projected to decrease by 25% next year compared to this year's budget. The staff is anticipating the gaming revenue levels will decrease by 19% in 2021. The level of capital investment in the budget remains substantial, coming in at $132 million. The next Budget Committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December 3rd, at 5:00 PM for the proposed of holding a public hearing to receive public comment or any or input on the proposed 2021 budget. That's the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Bears and a second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any other discussion, any objection that motion carried? Item eight, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 6476 Big Lake Road in Ward three, rezoned from agriculture to central business commercial.
Move to approve.
To allow commercial development, boat and RV storage. I need a motion to approve with conditions.
Move to approve with conditions.
I have a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Bears. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Would each of y'all have them come on up? Yes, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
Clay Heath, 7253 East Savannah Lane, Lake Trow, Louisiana.
Okay. You have the floor.
Clay, you want to tell us about your project?
You have the floor. You have three minutes.
Yeah, so basically what we're doing, we're kind of going to duplicate what we have right to the south of us with our property. Our Big Lake Plantation Boat and RV Stores is currently the adjacent property to the south. So we're purchasing this property to do kind of duplication of what we have there now. The same characteristics and pretty much, pretty much the same dynamics that we have now. So pretty simple project. We hadn't had any flood in the last three years. We've owned the current project now for three years. We had no flooding during Delta, which everybody knows we had a lot of water riddled. Drainage has been great. So I don't, I don't see why everything to the north of us is commercial. Big Lake Storage is down the road is commercial. Y'all just approve something on the corner of Goche and Big Lake Road as commercial, some storage facility there as well. So that's pretty much what we have going on there.
Thank you. And if you want to just wait for a minute, we're going to have a couple of people to talk.
Yes, sir. No problem.
Austin Abear. Mr. Abear, state your name and address for the record, please.
Austin Abear, 6386 Big Lake Road. Good?
Yes, sir.
I got some visual aids here. May I just?
Certainly.
I'm not quite believing what I just heard here that it hasn't ever flooded out there. But I've been living there for 44 years and I could probably have a stack of pictures of water out there as tall as this podium right here. But here's some, some recent ones that we got a real issue out there on that end of town, period. And what's happening right there, you know, I have no illusions that this isn't going to get its zoning because as your attorney explained to us a while ago that it's about land usage, okay? But if you live out there, you know, it's also about flooding. And that's what we contend with, that's what we're here about. I'm a businessman, too. I know he wants to develop something. My, my concern than everybody else out there is that we get it to drain. What he's developed so far is a dismal failure, as these pictures show you right here. And I'm not sure how that passed, but if it was supposed to work, it, it doesn't. And I sure hope that the next one does. I had a very good conversation with Guy today, known Guy for 100 years. We've been talking about this for a number of years. Many officials have been out there and looked at it and walked and talked and you want to do this and do that. I understand the wheels of government turn real slow and it takes a while to, to do things, but it's been going on for a while, about three years, Guy, we've been talking?
If not longer, Austin.
Yeah. But Guy assures me that you're, it's getting better, that it's going to get better. But it, it doesn't drain, gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, it doesn't drain. And a guy the other night at the meeting, when he came up for his rebuttal, he asked him, he says, well, does the water go away quickly? Well, it goes away relatively fast. Well, that's, that's really nice. But if you live out there, how often do you want the water coming up in your yard or in your pasture, water going, and going away relatively fast? Let that soak in, you know, no, no pun intended. But how many times do you want the water to come up on your land even if it goes away fast, you know? So that's what we're here about. Like I said, there's no illusions here that we can stop this from getting zoned properly. And I'll be the first one to walk, walk over and shake hands with him, tell him congratulations if he gets it to drain. But the first one doesn't drain, and I really hope there's something in place to ensure that this one drains. Guys, told me it will.
Yes, Mr. Brain.
Thank you. And Austin, yeah, you and I have had, had lots of conversations over the years and, and I know exactly where you live. I know, I know Heath's project. And then we've met Terry Freelo out there. I think Terry's here, yeah, several, several times. We got a lot of things, you know, his first project, we didn't have the ordinance in place. We, we, we passed that, I think, the last quarter of 19, if I'm not sure. I don't know. I can't keep up with time. But so he will have to follow the guidelines of the zero impact water to where he can't shed any water on anybody's property. And I'm just, I'm, I'm saying that in front of my colleagues because we all passed the same ordinance. They know the ordinance. And, you know, I'm hoping, I'm not hoping, I'm just saying that I'm, I believe that that will help. I believe that, along with some other projects that, that we have met you out there with, Terry and, and his, some of his engineers and we just, you know, the wheels do move slow. And this year, they really moved slow because there's other drainage projects that we've been trying to kick off and have gotten nowhere on them. But, but we have to get them done. And I, I know you're, I know everything that you said is, is true. But that's what he's got. That's the guidelines he's got to follow.
Ladies and gentlemen, though, what happens if it doesn't work?
Well, we.
What, what's, what's the recourse if it doesn't work? We're going to get it right next time?
Mr. Heber.
I guess, no, no, I don't think so, Austin. I think maybe I'll let Wes Crane speak on that.
Mr. Heber, Mr. Brain.
Hold on a second.
I just want to ask the President, you know, any speakers need to be called on once it can be recognized. It's not, it's not a back and forth. I'm just, it's protocol.
Okay, Mr. Brain, you have the floor.
Thank you. Can you call on Mr. Wes Crane, please?
Mr. Crane, please. Mr. Heber, would you let Mr. Crane?
I'm impressed by what all the COVID stuff y'all do. Gentlemen, it doesn't drain.
Hey, Austin, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Mr. Bean.
I mean, Mr. Bean. Austin, I'd just like to say, you, I'm going to try to get Wes to answer your question that you have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President, Wes Crane, Director of Planning and Development. We do have a provision in the ordinance that requires that the developer provide a runoff management plan unless appropriate waivers are granted by the engineering department. So what will happen is this project will be submitted to our, my department for review and then it, it's subsequently sent to engineering for their review for all the drainage. And so that's what they, they look for.
Okay.
And then they report that back to us, their findings.
Okay.
And if typically what will happen is it, it will either not require detention upon or it will require detention upon in order to meet the zero impact requirement.
Okay. If I may, Mr. President.
Yes.
Wes, I think Austin has a concern because he's, he's told me before it was, okay, during construction, is he, you know, I think he may have a concern that it may not be policed enough to where he's doing, he's doing what he's supposed to be doing. So can you just?
Well, I mean, we do have inspectors that go out periodically during the course of construction to make sure that at each course of the construction that is performed correctly. So that, that will be done. Now, we don't have anybody out there every day, don't, don't get me wrong, but during the course of construction, that, that will be done.
Okay, we get to the end, end of the project and, and what he, what was designed and what was there is not working. What, what then? And I'm just addressing, because I think that's one of his main concerns.
Well, if it's not, then, then we don't issue a certificate of occupancy for that developer to occupy that facility and, and then they have to correct the deficiency.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's fair.
Thank you, Mr. Brain.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Any other, Mr. Bears?
Just want to reiterate the fact, too, that this, this drainage, the pictures I've seen, I mean, that's probably 40, 50 years worth of, of, you know, buildup, the neighborhoods, businesses. I mean, we're not going to be able to fix it, you know, like that. So I trust in our ordinance, everybody who worked on that. I know, we, we, we know every, every little nook and cranny of that ordinance. So there's plenty of check valves in there. I just, I just want to let you know.
Thank you, Mr. Bears. Mr. Edgipon, you had your hand up?
No.
I wanted to get it.
Wanted to get his pictures back.
Oh, okay. Okay. We have another, Mr. James.
Sidlow.
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 Mr. James Sidlow. Mr. Sidlow, state your name and address for the record or I'll see you hand that to him.
My name is James Sidlow. I'm addressed to 3500 Miller Lane. And Miller Lane is right perpendicular to Big Lake Road, a corner from Austin. And I represent the residents up and down Miller Lane. And first of all, I'd like to really understand, we're, we're not against growth. You know, without growth, we wouldn't be this. The problem is, we're against growth without infrastructure to support it. I've been on that site for 20 years, all right? When I first moved there, there were no drainage problems. And every year, it's got worse and worse and worse. And if you look at those pictures, you'll see that now, and these pictures are not old, all right? They're two, three years old. So I understand what the gentleman said, but that isn't correct. These are two, three years old. A big rain now. And I'm not talking about a hurricane, all right? Miller Lane, you can't tell where it is. You can't always drive up and down unless you know where it is. By living there, you're going to run off the, off the road, all right? So that's a huge, huge problem. It's getting worse and worse. Across the road, and both them draining the same spot. Across the road, the property you're talking about, you'll see some pictures there where that house is where that property is, and the whole thing's flooded. You'll see another picture where that house is flooded and Austin's place is behind, behind it. So there is a problem now, all right? And again, we're not opposed to, to development, which your infrastructure is not there. And I've been being told for many years, oh, we're going to fix it. Well, what I'm saying is, fix it before you approve more problems. And I understand you have the new ordinance. And the Police Jury is to be recommended for that because I know that was a difficult thing to put in and a lot of people didn't want it. But that's going to help. But anybody that, I, I worked in that business for many years. I ran the utility department for a large chemical plant. And anybody that thinks in Louisiana where you have.
One minute.
Zero elevation, where you've got this raining into this, without pumps to provide better, right, better capacity, you're not going to get some flooding problems. You just can't, you just can't do it where we live. So it's going to help, but it's not going to solve the problem. So all we're asking is, and this development is not a bad development. I mean, I don't have any objections to what this gentleman's putting there. He already has one there, fine. All right. But what we're saying is, all right, solve your drainage problem before you continue to do what you're doing because you have responsibility to the existing residents, all right? And it's getting worse and worse for them.
James, hang on.
Thank you, Mr. Sidlow. Is the applicant still up?
Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Sidlow, sit there. Mr. Brain.
Thank you. Thank you. James, yeah. So, you know, I'm, I'm well, I know everything you just told me. You know.
And we, we appreciate you. You've spent a lot of hours on it.
Yeah, I know.
We understand that and we appreciate that.
I know. And I just, I wish I could make water run uphill. I'd be in good shape. So several things I'll just go over real with, with you real quick. The Big Lake Road, if we could get some maintenance from the state on Big Lake Road, that would just be amazing. But that's just not going to happen because I have at least me, myself, or any help that I've gotten from the, from Public Works or anything, we can't get the state to do anything. We got culverts in there that, that need to be yanked out. We found a trash can. Terry helped me. Finally, we figured out, we're going to go dig it up ourselves. We dug it up ourselves. There's a trash can in the culvert. It's just, but anyway, the Hamree Road project, okay? And Miller Lane has that, that crown in it. Half of it drains east, half of it drains west. Where you are, I think what's going to help is the new lateral that, you know, when we build the road, and maybe Tim can, can, you know, explain more of it. But I, I, back where Palmer lives in that area, you know, the, the drainage, I, I think that'll help. I, you know, I'm, I'm going by my, my common sense of how water runs and then also by listening to the staff. So, you know, I know your concerns. I know them. I've known them for, for 10 years or, or more. We, we just, and as far as Big Lake Road goes, development's coming. It's coming. And you're right, we got to have it right before you just keep on building and building. We got it right when we pass this ordinance. I believe so. I believe my colleagues believe so. We just need to, you know, it's got to prove itself. And I think that it will. But, but, but it, just again, just to let you know, we got those, those projects in, in, in the works. Hamree Road project was supposed to start April 1. Well, COVID. Supposed to start September 1. Well, Laura. And now we're trying to get it going again. So hopefully we can get it going and get things moving and, and help you guys. Because I know, I know that there's an issue out there. I've known it for a long time. Austin, I, you know, like I said, I've met with him. Anyway, I'm not going to keep on rattling. Just wanted to, just wanted to tell you that. I mean, I know you and, and I just appreciate you coming up here and telling it. But I wanted to just reassure you that we are working on it. Even though, hey, not a lot's been done, we're trying.
That's it, so. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Brain. Thank you, Mr. Brain. Is the applicant still? If you would have anything to say.
No, I mean, I, I don't disagree with them. There's definitely a drainage problem on that, that, that area. Is my current property or the property we're looking to purchase causing a problem? I don't think so because we're, they're north of me. So all their water's flowing through me and there's, there's no, nothing set up north of me to control that water. So it all sheet flows through my property. I catch it all and then I have to disperse it. And it still sheet flows to the west and to the south. So what happened was when Graywood built, they basically built the levee, the natural flow was to the west and it would flow through the marshes. And that was all rice fields back in the day. And when they put the levee up, basically it stops right there. And there's a small ditch. When I say ditch, you might not even be able to call it a ditch. And all the water has to flow along that to the, what, what Goche crosses into.
Haymark.
Yeah, Haymark. So it actually flows in the Haymark ditch. And that's the whole side of the road. Because my property, I don't have the frontage, so the front acreage, whatever it is. So my property all flows to the back. All sheet flows. There's nothing that flows to the front. Only the front acre flows to the front. So there's a breaking point. And that's, that's all along that area. So there's a lot of water going to the back. It stops at Big Lake, I mean, Graywood, and then it sheet flows all to the south. And now with all the trees down to the, to all the acres to the south of us, it's woods. And that sheet flow might slow down even more. Hopefully, HU and FEMA will step up and supply some funds to clear out some of these waterways. I know it's going to be. I know it's going to be out there, so hopefully y'all can get that accomplished for the parish, so.
Do we have any questions for the applicant or anything? Thank you, sir.
Appreciate y'all.
We, I'm sorry. Mr. Barris? Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve with conditions. Motion was by Mr. Barris and a second was by Mr. Tremonti. I'm sorry?
No, no, Brain and Barris.
Okay, I'm sorry, the motion was by Mr. Brain and the second was by Mr. Barris. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item nine, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the supplemental grant application for acquisition and or elevation of flood-prone residential structures in the Calquashu Parish. I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Andrewport. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry.
Move on to item 10.
Item 10. Consideration of adopting resolutions approving professional engineering contracts between the police jury and the following entities. Item A, Myers and Associates Incorporated, old Spanish Trail Waterline Upgrade Project. Item B, Man Shack Consulting Group Incorporated, Big Lake Waterline Expansion Project. And item C, ACOM Technical Services Incorporated, to conduct a feasibility study for a regional detention basin along Calute Cooley. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Brain. Is there any other discussion?
On all bullets.
On all bullets. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? That motion carries. Item 11, consideration of adopting a resolution accepting Cypress Trace Phase 1 Revised Subdivision located off Gosh Road in Ward 1. I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Reshard. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion carries. Item 12, consideration of adopting a resolutions of condolences to be forwarded to the family, to the late Mr. Wilbert Lewis. I have a motion by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Smith. And I just want to take a second to say, Mr. Lewis was a great guy. He really started a lot of projects to try to help people in different ways. He was also part of the NAACP. He was just a great guy. He always was trying to help people. Is there anyone else or anyone would like to say anything? Mr. Lewis.
Yes, he was a real, a great guy to me. Helped me out with a lot. He mentored a lot of little young kids. He was a little older than me. He, you know, he done a lot for me, so I want to really reach out to his family and tell them thank you for him helping me out a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I kind of, you know, agree with that, you know, it's still a shock to me because like I say, we kind of grew up in the same circles, you know, with the same age. And he was definitely a person that's going to be missed. He was the president of the NAACP for a long time and he did a lot for the community with, you know, a lot of youth programs and like I say, he's definitely going to be missed. And just be sorry, you know, for a good person being lost. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. At this time?
Move to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn. We are now adjourned.